He thinks the Blues, man. He could get an opportunity.
Streaming live on Facebook this evening?
No, he went. He lived in Atlanta, then Nashville. Then when he was in Nashville, he played for Saint Louis. With Kachuk. And Kachuk's son and all those who played up there. And then he moved to Dallas. And then he did high school in Connecticut. He played Canada. And now he plays for Cornell. And all four of the...
As far as you can, there's something else. They're weird.
During the year this year.
On the sidewalk without falling off the edge. I'm not straight. I have a slow.
6:00 PM will call the regular village board meeting to order if you'd all join me in a moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, give the roll.
Trustee Mann.
Here.
Trustee Gerger.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Detmers.
Here.
Trustee Mal.
Present.
Trustee Scherzl.
Present.
Village President Kimsey.
Present. Public announcements this evening.
I thank to everyone that came out for the independent state greetings and declarations. I counted at least 150 people before the rain showers hit and lost count after that, so.
It was perfectly timed reading.
Yes, it was.
Two minutes before the rain came, we finished. All right, thank you, Les. We appreciate all the work that you put into organizing that event as well, you and Mr. Welch. It's greatly appreciated, so. I need anything else. None public comments on agenda topics, Ms. Osberg.
You want to push that button there? Turn the microphone up.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Speak louder.
Speak louder.
There you go.
Is it there? Okay. Is anyone out?
Hmm?
I can...
It's not broadcasting live on YouTube. It's broadcasting live on Facebook on our livestream channel.
It's on my page. If you go to my page, the link is there.
I think they were talking about the microphone. So, anyway.
Okay. So, I put on that sign sheet that it's about the Vanderventer water booster pump contract. And I had two main concerns. One was, it appears that because of past business with them, we're doing a no bid. And I don't know that we have an ordinance on the books. I know we've talked about it in the past when I've been here giving ordinance to require bids for a certain amount, level of cost on contracts. But I had a concern about that, that it was no bid. It appears to be no bid. And then I don't believe their union contractor. You can correct me if I'm wrong. And then, so, lastly, I would request, since they are, as I believe, non-union, and I know it says on here that the contract is prevailing wage. However, I would like, at least for the trustees, to require an addendum to the contract that requires certified payroll to prove by record that they are paying prevailing wage. That's it. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Billups.
They can call me Bonnie.
I can be nice.
Can we say again where you can get that video?
Go to my Facebook page.
It's right on the village website.
It's also on the village website.
Under videos. You can click on there.
Chad Millenoy got it?
Mm-hmm. And it says Chatham Videos. And if you click on it, you got your choice of livestream or Facebook. The Chatham Village Facebook page, livestream page. It doesn't work on YouTube.
I don't know why.
It will tomorrow.
All right.
All right. Start my five minutes. Just a couple of questions. The PDC Labs that's on the warrants is stated it's for water samples. Is that for the citizens or is that for something in the village? And I know we don't get answers here. It was $910 total for the two, broken down. And I've already sent a question out because I don't want to make Pat mad at me tonight, but I was curious about that $500 tow for the Vactor. Because normally co-equipment would be able to come out and fix the Vactor truck if we're leasing still on site unless something major was wrong with it. Then I understand. And tax form is the best to tow. I know that for a fact. The only other thing that I've got, which is going to take me under five minutes, is this new company. Now, I might mispronounce it. It's Anixter Power Solutions. Is this a new company we've started using? Because I don't ever remember seeing it on warrants before. And it's like $13,543. And when I looked up the company to try to do my homework, it looks like it's a lot for communications and tools and things like that. So, with $13,543 of taxpayers' money being spent, if somebody could let me know what that is for? I mean, is it tools for this guy? I know there was a hard hat on there. I understand that. But it is in what? Glenview, Illinois? Is it anything that we can purchase locally instead of going to the new company in Glenview, Illinois? So, just a couple of questions, and I'm sure Pat would love to get back to me on it.
I will.
I know you will. Thank you.
My question is on, it says, oops. The lease agreement for a mini excavator. And then you also have a digger, dairy. Are those two the same things?
They're not.
I don't quite understand. And did we, do we know what they're even going to be used for? Releasing them?
I have no idea.
Putting out bids on them? Do we even know where they're going to be used? Just because you approve it before you put a bid out on it, I don't quite understand that part either. When you approve it before you even know what it's going to cost. And I just, I must have been asleep or wasn't at that meeting where all of this was discussed. And then the booster pump station that Teresa talked about? Is this in addition to the pump station we already have? Or is this a new one? I don't remember the discussion on that either. You know, I miss a lot. You all are talking, and I don't always quite understand. But I'd like answers to that. Somebody would answer. I know Charles would have answered questions and asked them. Not very many others are. Thank you.
All right. We're going to have a motion to put the consent agenda on the table.
Make that motion.
Trustee Mal has made a motion. I have a second.
Second.
It's your chance. Second by trustee Charo. Discussion regarding the minutes or the warrants. Hearing none? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mal.
Yes.
Trustee Scherzl.
Yes. Item number one is the Plan Year 2020 Transportation Planning Agreement between the Springfield-Sangamo County Regional Planning Commission and the Village of Chatham. Can I have a motion to accept this agreement? So moved. Trustee Scherzl's made a motion. Second?
I'll second.
Second by trustee Detmers. To say annual unified work program that the SSCRP, they coordinate this plan for us, part of the federal work copies, so. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mal.
Yes.
Trustee Scherzl.
Yes.
Item two is a resolution approving agreement with Vanderventer Engineering for the purchase and installation
of water booster pump station. Motion to bring this to the table.
Make that motion.
Trustee Mal has made a motion. I have a second.
A second.
Second by trustee Detmers. This is the second pump that goes into the pump house that we discussed as we were going through the budget with everybody. This is the one that runs parallel, so there's a backup at all points in time. Vanderventer is the manufacturer and the installer, the one that is existing in the pump house already. Their advice of engineering in our water department would build them to match that pump as close as they can. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mal.
Yes.
Trustee Scherzl.
Yes. Item three is an ordinance approving a lease agreement with Martin Equipment for the lease of mini excavator. Motion to bring this to the table.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Mal has made another motion. I have a second.
I'll second.
Trustee Mann, second. Discussion regarding the mini excavators for the water department. Correct, Pat?
Correct. But it'll be used by more than just the water department. The street department will use it for sidewalk repair, any place that we need to get in, lift up equipment and stuff like that, but don't want to have to tear up people's yards. This will be able to get in and get out. We got three different bids on that, and Martin Equipment was the lowest at a price of $5,450 per year for a five-year agreement.
Is it replacing one, or is it...
It is not. It's a new purchase.
This is the one they've been using, the excavator, which tears up everything if you have to use it, so.
You still need the backhoe for water main breaks and stuff, but for putting in services, repairing sidewalks and stuff like that.
So, the electrical department may use it, or in parks?
Electrical department has their own.
Okay.
Okay. And they use it a lot. Well, they use it for almost all their installation, unless they're going to bore it. And that's usually underneath roads. But if we're in open grass areas, we just open cut it most of the time.
Madam Clerk?
Trustee Mann.
Yes.
Trustee Gerger.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mal.
Yes.
Trustee Scherzl.
Yes. Are there any additional public comments on village business? Ms. Judd, your name is on here. Would she add more?
Oh, I thought that was after the committee of the whole. Was it just a board meeting?
There is a committee, but I can't start the committee for four more minutes, so if you'd like to help us fill the time now, now would be a prime opportunity.
Kind of your waste and my waste.
All right.
I can't ask a question. Yeah, and I was confused on that, too. The electric department has their little machine to do their things, and when you ask if someone else would use this machine that you're going to lease for five years for how much? Five thousand something? Why can't the other departments use the electric machine if the other departments are going to use the water one? And I'm sorry, sometimes it just does not make any sense. But, you know, who are we? We only pay the bills. I have a question when it comes to contracts and how raises are given. I know in the contracts it spells out when employees get their raises and how much or what percentage of different things such as that. How does a raise work when it's outside of that? In other words, like, I was looking at the payroll, and majority of raises were $3,000 for most people within the year. Some were more than that, some were less, of course. So, how is a person given a raise when, say, it's a $10,000 raise from last year to this year? How do the trustees do not approve that in any way? It's just given? By whom? If I could get an answer on that, I would surely like it. Because, I mean, it does seem substantial, you know? When all of a sudden, oh, here we go, you know? Makes a huge difference on the budget. And when Sherry stood up here the last time on the budget, she said that payroll was our biggest expense, which definitely I agree with that 100%. I don't begrudge anyone making the six figures. But when a person's pay raise raises more than what the contracts do, I sat in on three different contract negotiations for a multimillion-dollar company. So, I know how some want they work. I certainly don't know how they all work basically, because that was sometimes.
Ms. Burt?
Oh, I was waiting to read it, too. She told me.
Good chance. Fill the dead air if you'd like.
Oh, fill the dead air. You may not like what I say.
Yes, it's 6:15.
Mine is just a quick statement. I've been coming here now for five, six years since this water situation has come to a head. I would like to know why, when you folks are voting here to pass something, why you always rubber stamp everything? I'd like to hear some discussion about why you do that? Why you are voting on the particular item that you're voting on? And why you vote on it? I mean, we sit here and it's boom, 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 boom every week, every week. We would like to have a little more information, given times or data about why we did that or where you got the information from. We get nothing shared this, nothing. And I think that it's important for us to know how your thought, or what your thought process is when you're voting yes every meeting. Because we'd like to know a little bit more about what's going on. And having to dig it out of paperwork is not very efficient. But we could, we want you to have a little more connection to us out here instead of deciding things in the back room and there, deciding them on the phone right before the meeting or whatever. But rubber stamping is not good for any situation, especially in business and in politics. Thank you.
Schedule of meetings, committee of the whole is 6:15, July 9th. The transition planning committee, 6:00 PM, July 16th. Planning commission, 6:00 PM, July 18th. Village Board, 6:00 PM, July 23rd. Land Properties Recreation Commission meeting, 6:00 PM, September 9th. Utility oversight, 6:00 PM, August 12th. The Fire and Police Commission meets August 21st at 5:30. No further business for the board can have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Mal has made a motion. I have a second.
Second.
Second by trustee Charo. Madam Clerk?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting stands adjourned. Call to order. Roll call.
Trustee Mann.
Here.
Chairman Gerger.
Present.
Trustee Charo.
Present.
Trustee Detmers.
Here.
Trustee Mal.
Here.
Trustee Scherzl.
Present. Public comments on agenda topics? Did I have anybody sign up?
There's nothing else signed up. We've gone through everybody that's signed up.
Okay. Can I have a motion to bring the consent agenda forward?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Mann, second by trustee Mal. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? Old business having none, new business, CMT engineering updates?
Good evening. I've got a couple of items here, just to kind of recap what's been going on in both the village. Park Avenue is complete. The project, we have the final pay estimates to process on that, but the contractor has completed with that work. We've incorporated the bike lanes on that, and I've been hearing positive comments relative to the bike lanes and not hearing any adverse travel concerns from the motor public, and everything seems to be working very well on that project. MFT programs in full swing. Streets and urban is doing an excellent job, working on Tarmigan, doing the patching on that with concrete. They're also working with the township in terms of ownership. And then, as they go through certain maintenance activities, then they'll be moving on to other areas within the village, do curb better repair, sidewalk repair, and so forth. This here is kind of a little bit of a transition area with the street department moving from the leaf bag pick-up to Solely Street. And so, what's happening is we're kind of testing progress rates associated with that and creating enough activities for them to continue to move forward, and then looking at what needs are for next year. With the state gas tax going up, MFT funds will be substantially larger next year, which will provide additional funds for the street department to do additional repairs. At this point, the main focus is, you know, maintenance activities associated with the streets and trying to keep everything brought up to an acceptable level. I have a proposal to the village with Pat for a flushing program, revisiting that from three years ago now. So, Zone 1, re-implementing that program. It will be on a yearly cycle on that Zone 1. This year, this fall, once heat command calms down, Zone 2 next year, followed by Zone 3, and then it'll just be on a continual rotation from that point.
Which area is Zone 1?
Zone 1 is from the ground storage tank, kind of working on the east side of town back to the elevated tank. So, kind of elevated tank, everything in that direction.
Thank you.
Met with JD this morning, a small water main project that he's looking at doing for connecting a couple of dead-end mains on board to Deerfield. Village is looking at doing that project in-house. We'll have some plans for many activities associated with that. Pat and I are continuing to work on the letters of credit reduction with subdivisions. Provided me some public comments associated with that, in particular with North Point subdivision. So, we're going to return something to the village on that in terms of outstanding letter of credit and then current deficiencies by the end of the week, and that will go to consoling to update those documents and pursue cashing in on that letter of credit to primarily focus on gap sections of sidewalk that not getting... We're continuing to work with NRCS on the 519 grant associated with the park drainage improvements. It's kind of two different projects. One, as we saw in the comprehensive plan with the park plans, one is the development of a fishing pond, recreational passive park over by the village utility building. And looking at that is kind of a stormwater treatment project, combination with the recreational use of that. And then also looking at South Park, Community Park, in terms of removing the, I guess, decrepit old field tile system that continues to collapse, continues to be a maintenance problem, it's not a parks department, opening that up into a natural ditch, restoring that, doing native-type plantings, kind of referred to as like a riparian buffer, what you can see along a natural stream kind of through the center of the park, that helps to drop out sediment, pollutants, phosphorus prior to going into the Lake Springfield watershed. So, these are things that are supported by NRCS, City of Springfield, also in terms of the Village of Chatham and MS4 community with EPA. That all plays into, you know, being good neighbors and meeting EPA requirements associated with permitting with the MS4 program. So, we're working with NRCS to get that under grant and see what works, how we can package this up, how we can sell this as a stormwater improvement project. But the village also receives benefit from, you know, enhanced facilities for our constituents. Let's see, what else? Pat, I'm looking at, well, I said, here, looking at some drainage issues along Caro's Point. Received some comments from property owner off the corner of Tarmigan and Caro's Point. His basement received some flooding due to a clogged inlet, and there's really no overflow route out there, but there are some other drainage pipes available to provide some redundancy in that system. They maintain it on a regular basis, but the last time it flooded and filled his entire basement with water was at 3:00 in the morning, so didn't have a lot of opportunity to get out there in pine needles and debris and sewer. So, we're looking at that. And then further east were the main area there, the grass area that the village owns, looking at a future park site, also has considerable flooding in that location, which, you know, from, you know, that perspective, unless that's addressed, it doesn't provide a lot of usage for that property. So, we're investigating some alternatives and looking at, you know, options with the village crews to make some improvements there to both enhance the future use of that property and also address some drainage issues.
The pictures we got from the resident that lives there were terrible. It looks like overnight, Chatham got a lake. And it was, and the low point of the lake was this guy's backyard and his window well. So, we're probably going to end up doing something in the line of what we did over on the side of Oxford, where we go in and cut a big ditch, redirect the water from the farm property around it. We still will let the water that moves across the park property come through that area because there are pipes there to be able to handle at least that much. But right now, when, before the tillage, you know, there was nothing in or the crops were just barely in, and we got that big heavy rain.
Did that hit the 100-year flood marker?
It's probably the 20th time this year it hit the 100-year.
When they're long...
Statistically speaking, no, but the problem is that we keep having rainfall, after rainfall, after rainfall, so the ground is fully saturated.
There's nowhere for it to go.
Everything's wrong.
Yeah.
So, rainfall may not have been the 100-year event runoff would be close to that. The last time that we got the three-inch, been followed up with a two-inch. You know, some facilities that I've been involved with in the past that, you know, that I know the design frequency that would breach those facilities, we're looking at more of like a 10-year event of what we've seen with these medium-sized rains where you're two to three to four inches. When you start looking at the 100-year, you start looking at, you know, a 14-inch rainfall, 13-inch rainfall.
Gotcha.
For like a 24-hour period. It's just the constant recurring rain, carrying debris, blocking up structures that also causes a lot of problems in the localized drainage.
And you could see where the drainage was an issue at that low point on Tarmigan by Caro's Point because there's just mud all over that park, and you could tell it just collected there. And that's where there was drainage issues on the other side.
When there's crops in, we don't have problems.
Right.
When there's no crops in.
The debris from the crops ends up washing into the roadway, and then the plugs fail.
Right.
And then everything just starts filling up.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, we hope, at least on that one, on Tarmigan, when the next plat, platton, Fox Creek goes in, that will resolve a lot of those issues because a lot of that internal drainage will be taken back around to the natural drainage way rather than running over, which is the way that the current farm field is created. So, but this area that we're talking about is across the street. The houses on the north side of Caro's Point towards the east.
Okay.
Backing up to the area that the village owns there.
Very Vista Apartments.
So, even living up the hill, then?
Yeah.
Not even at the low end?
Yeah.
Wow.
So, just a small snapshot of what we've been involved with. Any questions?
On the, and this is a road question, and Pat, you may know the answer more than Jim here, but of course, as it gets hot, our oil and chip roads bleed and get soft. And are we starting to see any of that yet or not yet as far as this year? Any damage to those roads?
One of the things that the village does that's a little bit different than the townships is they use like a boiler slag for the surface that tends to bleed a lot less. You have a lot less of that tracking and pickup with those facilities. The townships use a lot of the white rock.
Yeah.
So, you know, out in the country, you know, going south on Board Drive, what they'll end up doing is during hot season, when they have a lot of bleeding, they'll throw out some blotting aggregate. So, you see like these white bands where they just, you know, dump some rock, just fan some rock over the road, left a bare spot, fan some rock over the road, left a bare spot, fan some rock. So, that prevents a lot of the tracking of the oil and picking up and throwing it on vehicles. But what we see with the boiler slag rock is it doesn't bleed nearly as bad as the smaller oil and chip white rock that the townships typically use. So, roadways hold up a lot better. It's more expensive material, but they're not out every year, oil and chipping the same roadway.
I know some of these townships have started using this dustless, it's like a reddish rock instead of the white rock, so they can put it down, and it doesn't cause all the dust and other issues that the white rock has in the past, so.
Do you know if all township's going to do that this year?
I know they did last year some. I don't know what the intention is this year, but... I, I know they did last year some, I don't know what the intention is this year, but...
Berry and its crews, they're gonna, they're working with Chatham Township now and coordinate on where our roads and their roads come together to get the best bang for their buck. And then there's, when they get done with that, then they're going to switch over and work with Chatham Township, I'm sorry, Ball Township, to be able to do the same thing on some of the roads that are comboed where one side might be Chatham and the other side might still be ten.
It's a lot better on the cars that are going through and the homes that have windows open and don't blow all that dust and stuff in the houses and so.
I just have a request to, could you please, or somebody please send me the report that shows the grading of the streets and what levels they have. I want to send that to Mr., to trustee Charo as well too, please.
Okay. We're working on that, trying to find the best avenue on who houses this material, whether it's on Chatham server, whether it's on C and T server as a link, but I can get you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. Village manager update?
Just a little bit of spinoff for the guys who are doing a great job on the roads right now. Electric department, they did a good job on the couple storms and stuff that we had that they were able to get the power back on real quick and knock on wood, we haven't had any problems with water in a while, so. The police department, I think you guys have been chugging along, there's nothing special going on right now. We didn't have any problems, I don't think, with homecoming or anything like that. Getting ready for Sweet Corn Festival when it comes up. I've had some inquiries into properties along Route Four on the north or on the west and east side of businesses that may want to come to Chatham, so that's encouraging. About all I can think of right now.
It's okay to say it's been.
I do.
Huh? It's okay to say it's been tame and smooth and...
It has been going pretty smoothly.
Have you heard any thoughts on the land pickup so far?
They, I called Mike Pierce today and I said, so how did your first week go? And he goes, I got a few phone calls. He goes, I missed a few streets, went back, picked them up and stuff. He goes, you know, my guys, as they're driving around town, when you get to a road and you go like, okay, we're going to go down to do this one, but then they're like, oh shoot, we forgot to go back and do that one. So, so they, I think they've made it all the way through town now. The girl said they got a lot of calls and stuff like that, but they forward them all to Mr. Pearson, he's been calling them, so. He said it was a success, but he said we'll get better with added every single month, so.
They're running a different approach than we were running as a village and they think that generates some of it because they run three times, as he said, depending on which...
Well, I think they did two. I don't think they ended up doing three, but they, their plan was to, to mulch what, the small stuff, and then if it was too big to mulch, then they would come back with their, their picker and pick it up and put it on a truck and take it, haul it off, so.
I think some of, some of those initial calls where I saw them here and they skipped mine.
Some people, they may have half their pile taken and then the, the big pieces are left and they're like, oh, you're going to come get this? Well, once, once everybody gets used to the plan, it'll, it'll be a little bit easier.
But where are we on the chlorid mains or any further update on those?
That's, that's a good point. We, we have not got them to switch to chlorid mains yet. Bill went out there yesterday, put together a letter. I sent a draft of it to Dave to take a look at, but I think next Monday I will go out to the water meeting and we, we need to get something done.
And is our soon coming out a year now almost since we...
Oh, I'm sure it's at least.
Or over here?
I'm sure it's over here.
Okay.
Yeah. Everything has been okayed by the EPA from what I understand.
Tell them our check will come soon.
Yeah, yeah, check's in the mail, yeah.
Soon.
Anything else? Oh, we got another big load of wood chips. We put those down on the playground. We took out the old timbers all the way around there. We still got some sod to cut out, but that looks good. We're disappointed that they haven't got here yet to paint the pickleball courts, but the pickleball people requested specialized fencing to go inside there and they hired Harold Christopher Locke to turn around and put the fencing in. And by the time he got there and got the fencing in, well, now it was time for the people that do the painting of the courts to hit some of their high school spots and stuff, so they had to go do those while school was out.
Now this extra fencing, that's not out of the price range that...
That was paid for by the pickleball people.
Okay.
Okay. So it may be this fall now.
They have a club, right?
They have a club.
You'll have to call them pickleball people.
Pickleball people.
Friends of Chatham pickleball?
Yeah. Everybody's a friend of.
Why not? You were going to ask about...
Any other questions?
Any other questions or anything?
This now? Oh, okay, yeah, sure. Okay, I want to, so we all get this magazine, the IML review magazine, and upcoming is, upcoming in September is the annual convention. I haven't been in I don't know how many years, I don't know when the last time we, Terry went last year, he was the only one, right?
Terry went last year, yeah.
Okay. And I think it is personally an important convention that we go to a conference and I'm requesting that we send some people this year.
And we put in the budget to be able to send people to the conference. We used to put in for everybody, we don't put in for everybody anymore, but we could come up with the funds if, if that need be. The thing that you need to do is, they hold the conference at a hotel that charges more than what the state rate allows. So by the state ordinance, if the board passes an ordinance stating that their trustees or mayor or whatever can go and stay at that hotel, then we, we're allowed to pay the higher rate. You guys have to vote on it in a public forum.
Yeah.
If you choose not to, in the past, Terry, last year?
What did we do with Terry?
He requested it.
And we approved it.
And then you guys approved it, yeah.
I don't remember proven. Yeah, we did. No, we did.
So I asked Matt to take the vote. I think you took, I think you approved it after the fact.
But we approved it, oh, after the fact.
I'm asking before.
Through the warrants.
Yeah.
So it wasn't like a separate resolution?
No. Well, I think it was.
I think it was separate.
The actual mechanics, we'd have to look back to see specifically what we did.
Because I, I don't, I'm not for paying over state rate.
Well, and you guys have that right. He could still stay there, but you'll only pay up to what the state rate is and then Matt would have to make up the difference.
That makes sense. Maybe we could just stay there and then we pay the difference.
Because I know when we went, I mean, we stayed away because it was way cheaper.
You have that option also.
Yeah, we didn't stay at the hotel. Yeah, because that's an option.
It is.
And we would reimburse for your travel as well as your meals at the rate that's in the state guidelines.
State guidelines are federal.
I think it's federal.
Federal per diem.
Okay. Because state per diems nothing. Day per diems twenty-eight dollars a day in Chicago, that won't get you breakfast.
It won't get your breakfast.
Coffee, maybe.
Hopefully the hotel has Continentals.
Don't get sugar in your...
All depends on the day though.
Don't get crane.
Muffin.
Well, I told Matt to ask you beforehand instead of after.
Yeah, sure.
That way it gives them some guidance.
I don't like to ask for forgiveness. I like to...
Understand.
I like to ask beforehand.
Good for you.
If you tell me no, then we'll look other ways, but.
Try to, try to find a hotel within the federal guideline rate and if you can't come back and ask again.
Or I'll just pay the extra, I don't, yeah.
But if anybody wants to go to the conference, please let Jill know, she'll make your reservations for you at the conference.
Yeah. We get an early bird price, don't we, early bird price, or is that over?
It is.
Okay.
But I'm not sure it's over with yet.
Okay.
On the warrants, there was like four...
See you, Jill.
Conference is paid for.
Well, there was two paid for already, I think, or I think there was two of us already signed up. But we're asking, we're asking about the hotel and the per diem and that part.
Oh, you're not asking about the conference?
No, no, just the, yeah.
Okay. All right. Utility oversight committee discussion, we had the individual come in from the public, presented her case for the leak forgiveness ordinance paper that we have. It was agreed to by that committee to have her meter sent out and tested and see if it tested, it went to the range, and we would give her a leak adjustment of two twenty-nine, do you have the...
Two twenty-nine oh three or something like that?
Two twenty-nine oh three was the leak adjustment we approved prior to that and then we would adjust that adjustment if the meter came back bad. We got the meter information back, it looked like it was within the range of operating properly. So that's all that we, we approved. If the board wanted to take any further action, they could, but we approved the two twenty-nine and what they figured out would be her adjustment that she can request. Have we shared that with her?
We have.
Okay.
And we told Jamie across the street, so she's working out her, her next bill accordingly.
All right. And then we have no other, we had no other complaints or forms filed or...
Nothing has been presented right now.
And that's all we discussed. We're still looking for another public member of that board. I have one person I think is interested, I'm just waiting on an email from them, but if anybody's interested, send an email to me and we'll look at getting somebody added before that August twelfth meeting. And that's it. So next, ADA transition?
Yeah, we wound up not having a, a meeting. We did not have enough for a committee, so.
Apologize, I was unable to attend. We'll see you next Tuesday.
We'll beat you then.
All right. Public property and recreation committee discussion?
Met last night, welcomed a new member, Scott Curtis, discussed the pickleball courts, which Pat touched on, again, those courts won't be painted or surfaced until sometime in August. Talked about the park maintenance needs at community park with the wood chips and railroad ties. The park was closed today for that work, so thank you Parks Department. Also talked about West Side Park and grading it and putting in some drainage tile for West Side Park to be usable again. And then we talked about some fundraisers for different organizations that are trying to install a pet, a dog park in Chatham. Those are the items. Touched on the Massey and Massey comprehensive parks plan and what our next steps might be.
Now, my, the only comment I have about these separate groups and they're wanting to hold fundraisers and raise money to build special, whether a dog park or, you know, I want to make sure that if we're doing this, there also, there's also funding mechanisms for upkeep of that park. I mean, I can understand the pickleball courts and their tournaments and stuff, thank for upkeep, but how are we going to upkeep a dog park? Are you going to charge every time somebody brings a dog? I mean, I don't know how that's going to work.
No, sir.
I don't believe that's the village's responsibility either.
Well, to be clear, these, these groups are independent citizens acting in what they believe to be their best interest. I joined the public properties commission in an attempt to close the gap of communication between that group and this board, and that's what I'm doing. End any public properties commission meeting if you, if you wish, but with respect to your question, these folks are just simply trying to raise money, just as the pickleball group did, in order to get what they think Chatham needs. What Chatham does is ultimately dependent upon this board and its management. So if you don't want a West Side Park and somebody asks for twenty-five thousand dollars to do it, then you say you won't know. So that's how that works. And I, I adamantly agree with you with respect to building new parks or any further development is that we are very well aware of what those recurring costs will be, because even if a park is free, it does not mean that we should do it. So that's been very clear.
The thing that you have to remember, Matt, is, is they need to follow kind of the same structure that the friends of the park and, and the friends of pickleball have done, where they raise their own money and then if they want to donate something to the village, they donate a check. We don't want to start a fund here where somebody comes and starts dropping off checks for that. The problem is, is then that gets pigeonholed into that one account and say you never get enough money to be able to do anything with it and then it just sits there. We had that at one time where we were raising money for lights on the bike path and we never raised enough money to put one light on the bike path. So we finally got a person to release it, we put a water fountain along the bike path, but, so as long as the outside groups are the ones that are collecting the money and all that is taken care of that way.
Well, and I have, and again, I have no problem with that, I, you know, go full ahead, but again, my concern is, is if we do do, you know, a dog park or whatever it may be, and then we, a lot of times we tend to leave out that very important funding mechanism. And that's the part that concerns me.
Now, I, I mean, what you're talking about is the sustainability. I mean, if, so if, if you're looking at dog park and they go out and then they're not just doing fundraisers, but they're looking at grant opportunities, you know, and a part of any grant opportunity, if they find one, it's going to put the budget together, they'll have to submit the budget. Having the Massey and Massey plan will be very helpful in submitting a grant. And the other component of that will be the sustainability of the park. And then I think at that point, that's when, when this committee and then this board can weigh in, as trustee Detmers has said, on what the sustainability plan will, will be for it. Thank you for passing it on.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Public comments on village business. Do we have anybody for that?
Unless they want to go now.
Go ahead, darling.
Pat, when was the bids put out for that excavator leasing five thousand dollar thing?
It was not that I forbid, it was quoted.
Oh, so you had...
We had three, three quotes.
How did you get the quotes?
You went to the company and told them, this is what we want, and they said, okay, here's our price for that. Then we come back and we look at them and we took the low quote.
Oh, so you didn't have the bid put out, you didn't have the bids submitted and you didn't have the open up or bid, you just did it all verbally?
No, I have documents here of, of what their bids were or their quotes were.
Okay, but there was no dates on when this was done?
There's a date on every quote here.
No, I realize that, but is that not done publicly? Am I missing something here? Or I need to tell you something?
So the, the village, this, this piece of machinery specialized, and so the village had the specs drawn up and went out to the three companies to get the actual piece of machinery and then based on those quotes, they selected Martin's, Martin's quote and then today...
Was it the lowest?
It was.
It was the lowest and it met the specs that, that they needed for this, for this piece of machinery and then they waived the bidding, any other bidding requirements today and approved that quote.
The drop specs?
The one thing I had a question on is, is if we're leasing, do you bid anything? If you're leasing anyway, you're bidding if you purchase, but if you're leasing something, you don't have to go through the bid process, correct?
That's correct.
That's what I thought.
Would you expect that?
Do we have a reason for, we do have a reason for a closed session, so can I, personnel under two, see one. Do I have a motion? So moved. Trustee Scherchel, do I have a second?
I'll second.
The man, all in favor? No, we have to do a roll call for the closed session.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Charo.
Yes.
Trustee Detmers.
Yes.
Trustee Mao.
Yes.
And we'll have no further business when we return, except to re-adjourn and adjourn?
Re-adjourn and then re-adjourn.
All right. Thank you.
Stop the broadcast.
Adjourn?